Seeing that we now have quorum, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council to order here on September 3rd, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Pete Mount Smith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Asari?
Present.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Two things of note, I do like to start off meetings with some, something interesting and historical and relevant as I can do it. So I have two things to talk about tonight. First, I want to recognize that Labor Day was this past Monday. Labor Day was created by an act of Congress, making it a legal holiday in June of 1894, right after some massive worker riots, as a way to try to repair connections with American workers. The labor movement and labor unions grew vocal during those 1800s, when manufacturing and the Industrial Revolution began really taking off. And at that time, the average American worked 12-hour days, seven days a week, in order to make a basic living. And children as young as five or six worked in mills and factories and mines. Working conditions were unsafe and unsanitary. So I want to recognize the labor unions and the workforce, working together and how they fought for fair wages and safe working conditions and reasonable hours, getting to today's 40-hour, five-day work week, which is like some kind of ideal, which still is not met in a lot of ways. But I want to recognize the, how hard unions have fought and continue to fight, even while some power is being stripped of unions and negotiating. The state of Indiana actually changed rules around teacher unions and what they can negotiate about last year. But in other places, workers are banding together to try to increase their wages and improve their working conditions and creating unions in places like Starbucks and Amazon. And Kroger recently signed a new contract with unions. So just wanted to take a minute to recognize Labor Day. And then secondly, speaking of service and labor, I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of Pat Williams this morning and her commitment to the city of Bloomington. Pat was the longest-serving Bloomington city clerk, serving from 1982 to 1999. And recognition to her service is evident through the city, including on a plaque right outside of these chambers. She was dedicated to her role and to her community, also serving as Monroe County Democratic Party Chair. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence in remembering Pat and the contribution that she made to Bloomington. Now we will continue on with our meeting here tonight. On our agenda tonight are three sets of minutes for approval. And as a note, slightly modified versions of those were, of two of them were sent out this afternoon. After minutes, we will have reports, first from council members, and then from the mayor of city, mayor and city offices, where we will hear a report from the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability. Then we will hear from council committees, though I do not believe that we have any council committee reports this evening. Last in reports is reports from the public, and that will be the first opportunity for public comment this evening, if there are any members of the public wishing to comment on items not on the agenda, that is the time for that. After reports, we will have appointments to boards and commissions, and I do believe that we have an appointment to make. Then we will have two pieces of legislation for first reading, ordinance 2025-33 to establish the Fiber Connectivity Fund for Digital Opportunity Initiatives, and then ordinance 2025-34 to establish a fund for the proceeds of the surety bond related to the fiber optics network work. Then we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions. We will start with resolution 2025-13 to establish the Affordable Housing Pilot Fund for the city of Bloomington, and then we will have resolution 2025-14 regarding Designated Bloomington as a B-City USA affiliate. After those resolutions, we will have an additional period of public comment. So if anybody decides at the end of the meeting that they would like to comment on an item not on the agenda, that is another opportunity to do so. And you can just comment during one of those two periods of general public comment. There will, of course, also be public comment related to the resolutions this evening. We will have any notes on council schedule after that, and then adjournment. So if we could start with the minutes.
I move that the minutes from February 5th, April 16th, and July 16th be approved
July 7th.
Yeah, and then the updated one said July 16th on the date, so I, we didn't, we weren't here July 7th.
You're right.
Okay. As I said, February 5th, April 16th, and July 16th.
Second.
Thank you.
Great, there is a motion and a second for those three minutes. As a note, it looks like there was an error on the agenda regarding the July 7th versus July 16th minutes. Were there any other questions or comments on the minutes? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to approve those minutes? Sorry, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. On to reports from council members. Let's go ahead and start online tonight with Councilmember Flaherty. Do you have a report this evening?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
No report.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted to speak to President Trump using National Guard and active-duty military in our cities. The courts correctly ruled on, yesterday, earlier this week, that he violated paucicamentatis, that is unconstitutional, what President Trump did as far as ordering National Guard and Marines into Los Angeles earlier this year. The situation in Washington DC is, of course, unique because it doesn't have, it's not a state that normally state governors control National Guard troops, but there are about 800 National Guard troops in Washington DC right now, ostensibly to deal with a crime wave, but that is false. There is no crime wave, crime was decreasing even before the troops got there. And as an American and somebody who has sworn to uphold the Constitution, I find all this very, very disturbing, in addition to the statements that the President has made about sending troops into Chicago and Baltimore. Using military force in civilian law enforcement situations is a hallmark of autocracy and not of a democracy or Republican form of government. And it is greatly disturbing to me, and I will continue to speak out against it. And I, I hope our mayors and our, and our governors across the country hold strong and oppose these actions that are unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daley?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to quickly also acknowledge the passing of Pat Williams. I only met her a couple times, very briefly, but I just wanted to extend my deepest condolences to her friends and her family. I know she was deeply loved. And when I was caucusing to fill this seat, she, she is one of my constituents, so she lives in my district, she was one of my people who were here caucusing eligible to vote for me, and she was very, very kind to me throughout the process and made me feel like I had every right to be here and to belong when I felt like an outsider at first. So I just wanted to pass that along and my sympathy and sorrow for her family and friends. Thank you.
I also had a short report, kind of like Councilmember Pete Mount Smith's thoughts. Only I want to talk about gerrymandering. So a few weeks ago, during my little intro, I talked about gerrymandering, and it's kind of interesting that the conversation nationally has escalated in such a way. And it's, it's pretty appalling that multiple states around the country are now pursuing this mid-decade changes to voting maps in order to shift the balance of elections before the first vote can even be cast in an election. And especially in today's world, where we have so many resources at our fingertips to make sure that our maps are drawn in ways that are equitable, it is especially just absurd, the kind of clinging to power that seems to be happening in some of these places. And Indiana is one of them. And so one of the things that I just wanted to highlight here for just a second is where we are right now. Indiana, as I mentioned a few weeks ago, is already quite gerrymandered, and it is one of the states that the Republican supermajority is considering and thinking about redrawing our maps to try to cut out any of the Democratic representation that we currently have. And I just wanted to highlight some data and some figures, in case you're sitting out there being frustrated in some ways right now. So in the past seven presidential elections, an average of 41.8% of Indiana voters have chosen the Democratic candidate, 41% on average over the last seven presidential elections. Over the same period, the Democratic candidate for governor has gotten an average of 43.9% of the vote. So the Republican supermajority might want us to think that Indiana is like all Republican, but it is not. There's a solid 40%, if not more, there's 40% of voters who are picking Democratic candidates consistently over the last 30 years, okay? And our current representation right now in the Indiana House of Representatives is 70% Republican, and in the state senate is 80% Republican. We are already gerrymandered to the hilt, and it is just appalling that they want to gerrymander even more. And in our federal representation, 78% of our seats in the US Congress are Republican, and then both of our senators are Republicans. So Democrats in Indiana are already underrepresented, and they want to underrepresent us even more. And I just want to say out loud that Democrats in Indiana deserve to have representation. And that is my report. So now, moving on to the mayor and city offices, who is here from the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability? Please step up and introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, good evening. My name is Justin Vassal. I am the Chair of the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability. So thank you for having me tonight. I am excited to present to you our commission's annual report for 2024. I know we are in September of 2025 now, but, so I'll be looking ahead a little bit to 2025 in this report. It might seem a little odd, but hopefully I'll see you all again soon to talk about how that's going. 2024 was a really exciting year for us. I think it was a year that proved to be a pretty transformative one for our commission in both ways that were challenging but ultimately rewarding. So I was meant to have some slides here for you today. I had a little mix-up and didn't get them in on time, so instead I'll just give you a verbal update. You've got the written report in the pack of materials. There's really only one graphic on there, so I won't, you know, make you read through the full report while I'm up here. So let me just first start by, you know, saying who we are, who BCAUSS is. So we're a 14-member advisory body with five council appointments, six mayoral appointments, and three ex officio seats that are occupied by members of this body, Monroe County Commissioners and the IU Office of Sustainability. So the purpose of our commission, as stated in Bloomington Municipal Code, is to promote and advance sustainable policies and practices in Bloomington across environmental, social, and economic dimensions. We think of sustainability as a community meeting its needs today without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. Our work to make Bloomington a more sustainable city is guided by the framework set out by the United Nations and their Sustainable Development Goals, as well as by the relevant city plans that we have here, like the Comprehensive Plan, the Climate Action Plan, and the Sustainability Action Plan. So a lot of cities have commissions that are focused specifically on environmental sustainability, or specifically on economic development, or on social equity. But it is far less common to find a city commission that addresses all dimensions of sustainability from a holistic perspective like BCAUSS does. So it's something really special that we have here in Bloomington. Now tackling a topic as broad as holistic sustainability certainly presents challenges, especially for a group of 14 enthusiastic volunteers like ours. But it is a worthy endeavor, and it's an opportunity for Bloomington to demonstrate leadership in this area. So BCAUSS has been serving Bloomington since October of 2005, which means our 20th anniversary is just around the corner. So that's very exciting. We're going to be taking some time to sort of reflect on our accomplishments over the past two decades, and to consider some of the lessons we learned along the way and how we can apply those to the future. We're certainly ready to face the challenges ahead, and I think the work that we did in 2024 really set the stage for some of the productivity that we're experiencing so far this year, and that we hope to continue on into the years ahead. So let me just start with some top-of-the-line numbers for 2024, which was a very dynamic year for us. We faced some operational headwinds early in the year, but our commissioners showed, I think, a remarkable dedication, and we, and we finished strong. So we were able to hold nine of our 12 scheduled regular business meetings, and we also held two work sessions throughout the year. We welcomed seven new commissioners out of our 14, who brought fresh energy and perspectives into our work, and we awarded $7,000 in grants for sustainability projects. Significantly, we passed our first formal resolution in several years, which we're very proud of, which affirmed our commission's role in city sustainability efforts. And I came to report on the passage of that resolution several months ago to this body. So speaking of grants, in 2024, BCAUSS had two sources of funds from which we could award grants. The first source is what we call the Sustainable Neighborhood Grants, which are for sustainability projects that benefit individual neighborhoods. And then the second is what we call the Working Group Funds, Working Group Grants, which are funds that can be allocated to commissioner-led projects that are, that come out of our working groups within the commission. We don't currently have a treasury of our own, so ESD has generously provided up to $10,000 annually in each of these funds. And so I'll just start with the Sustainable Neighborhood Grant Funds that we awarded in 2024. There's a couple of projects there. The first was a $1,000 grant that we awarded to a project called TerraCycle 2.0, at least that's what we're calling it, and that's hosted in the Covenanter neighborhood. And those funds were used to procure specialized recycling boxes from a company called TerraCycle that diverts hard-to-recycle materials out of landfills. So they send you a box, you put things in it that you normally can't recycle, and then you send the box back to them and they recycle it for you. So the funds there were used to procure some of these specialized boxes, and to have the neighbors in the area, you know, bring their recyclable materials into that box. So what we awarded this year was a follow-on to a 2023 pilot project, which sort of demonstrated that this was a popular thing, that the boxes were being used. And, you know, we learned some initial things, like laminated paper and food wrappers were some of the biggest, you know, products that, some of the biggest waste reductions for that program. And so sort of focusing in on some of those, those specific types of recyclables in this, in this follow-on project. And the data that's collected in this follow-on project, we hope to use to understand how this type of project could be expanded at a larger scale and replicated throughout the city. And that's, that's one of the things that we look for when we are selecting these projects for funding. We don't, you know, want to, you know, award a project that's just going to have a one-time benefit. We're really looking for projects that by themselves might not necessarily move the needle, but that have the potential to expand and continue to generate benefits once they're proven to be feasible. So the other award that we gave in the Sustainable Neighborhoods Grant Funds was $1,000 for an installation of a native pre-made pollinator garden in the Grandview Hills neighborhood. I know pollinators are sort of on the agenda tonight, so that's a very timely thing. And yeah, so that's what we did for the Sustainable Neighborhood Grants this year. Unfortunately, 2024, I should say for 2024. Unfortunately, 2024 is the last year that BCAUSS will be involved in the selection process for those grants, but we're looking forward to hearing the final reports from the projects that we currently have underway. For the Working Group Grants, we've also made some large impacts there. The sort of biggest one maybe is the Canopy Bloomington Partnership that we had, sort of our signature achievement for, for funding projects this year, is going to plant 16 trees in underserved neighborhoods. So, you know, the, these are trees that are being planted in areas where trees had previously, you know, not survived after they were initially planted, so it's to replace some of those. But what's important is that each of these trees comes with a three-year maintenance commitment from the property owner, and there's also a, you know, technical support that comes from Canopy Bloomington to help, you know, aid in that, that critical three-year period. The other project that we had was sort of innovative project with Red Bud Books on Kirkwood Avenue, and so we're having installed there what's called a Cobb Bench, and a little pollinator garden there as well, that can sort of serve as a sustainable example of a community gathering space, you know, using ancient building techniques with, with local materials. So that's something we're looking forward to as well. And one thing that we were looking forward to funding in 2024, but we didn't quite get there before the end of the year, was a project related to bokashi composting, which was spearheaded by Matt Austin, who's here today and heads our Waste Reduction Working Group. And so we're hoping to get this approved in 2025, but basically this would be an educational sort of project to, to show that bokashi composting, you know, to, to teach people what it is, how to do it, how they can get involved, and hopefully to partner with some local festivals to divert some of that food waste, which would otherwise go into the landfill, and instead use it in this composting process. And one thing that we were really excited about is that there was a potential, this sort of partnership with the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County, where they were going to match some of our funds. So of course, nothing in stone yet, but we're certainly excited about the prospect of potentially increasing that impact to that strategic partnership. So these aren't really just, you know, these aren't just projects, they're, they're really investments in Bloomington's sustainable future. We choose them through careful deliberation and the expertise that our individual commissioners bring. And each of those projects require community members, commissioners, and city staff to do a lot of work, to come together, prepare, review, and approve those proposals. And so I just want to express my gratitude to everyone who's been involved in those over the last year. I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish with those projects so far, especially in light of some of the more challenging aspects that we encountered this year. So speaking of that, every organization has growing pains at times, and we're certainly no different. 2024 definitely tested us. For example, we operated for the first several months of the year with, without permanent leadership. We struggled with some quorum issues early on in the year, that's why we weren't able to have all of our meetings that we had scheduled for the year. We navigated complex administrative requirements, limitations to our meeting format, and commission continuity difficulties. But I think what really matters here is that we transform these struggles into improved outcomes by the end. So our intent is approved, our process is strengthened, and our commissioners persevered through these obstacles, and I think that demonstrates their deep commitment to the important work that we do at BCAUSS. I'm particularly grateful to the council for your confidence in our leadership during this transition period and in the past. Your support, especially through reappointments when we have vacancies, has sent a clear signal to us about the value of continuity in our experience, and it's allowed us to maintain momentum even when we're facing hitings. So the lesson of 2024 to me is that committed people working together can overcome these structural challenges, deliver some real value to our community. So we want to build on that momentum. In the second half of 2024, we strengthened our foundations, our foundation for future work, and we launched several key initiatives. So for example, a BCAUSS Resolution 2024-01, which I mentioned earlier, and was passed unanimously in December, affirmed our unique and vital role in city governance, explicitly supporting our broad advisory mandate and incorporating the concept of resilience into our purview. We launched our first comprehensive sustainability assessment in many years, and established an ad hoc committee to evaluate progress on climate action goals. We recognized that our standard meeting structure was proving insufficient for all the things that we wanted to do and discuss, and, and for that workload, so we innovated by adding on work sessions where we could deliberate and discuss in a more, in a, in a looser way. So, so these collaborative sessions that, which took place in the public library, allowed us for some deeper engagement on some of these complex projects without the time and topic constraints that, that formal meetings usually bring. And finally, we began to engage with other commissions, something that we hope to continue into 2025 and beyond, and that was in accordance with a strategic engagement strategy that we set out back in 2023. So looking forward, we've identified two main strategic priorities that we have for 2025. First is housing and urban agriculture. So we're looking at examining how green building practices can improve both sustainability and affordability. I know housing is a topic that's front of mind for, for a lot of folks, and it's definitely a sustainability issue. We'd like to investigate alternative housing models, alternative zoning models, and their environmental, economic, and social impacts. We'll also assess food security through an urban agriculture lens. Climate change threatens food supply chains, this is something that we know, and local resilience really does matter. Our second priority is education and coalition building and outreach. So we recognize that our greatest impact often comes through amplifying existing community efforts. So we'll connect with residents, excuse me, we'll connect residents with resources, we'll strengthen partnerships with organizations that are already doing work in the realm of sustainability, and we'll increase public engagement through events and educational activities and initiatives. These priorities emerged from the expertise that our commissioners bring to the group and to the needs of the community, the way that we see them. So we're looking forward to predictive partnerships across all the city departments and commissions and boards as we pursue them. Of course, through all of that, council support remains crucial to our effectiveness, and we would certainly like to reciprocate that support that we've seen. So I want to encourage the council to feel free to seek BCAUSS input on any sustainability-related ordinances that might come up. Our holistic perspective might be able to help identify unintended consequences or opportunities in those sorts of decisions. And so we're a resource for you, as well as for the rest of the city, and we're always happy to lend our expertise and help guide decision-making. So in closing, I just want to express gratitude from everyone that contributed to BCAUSS in 2024. I want to especially thank the staff at ESD, who has worked with us through this year. Particularly, I want to thank our staff liaison, Sean Mia, and Sustainability Program Coordinator, Jolie Perry. They have been fantastic and a wonderful resource for us. And I want to thank the residents of Bloomington, who attend our meetings and make their voices heard, and give us some good ideas to think about. And a special appreciation again to this council for creating space for commissions to fill their advisory roles and to come report back to you in these forums. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do councilmembers have any questions? Councilmember Ruff?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much for not just your, your work on behalf of the whole community, well, the whole planet, actually, but, but, and thanks to the efforts of the entire, everybody involved. But you mentioned, you know, you strive to have, the group strive to have productive and collaborative relationships with all city staff and city departments. I feel like, I don't know, maybe a decade or more ago, there was also a big effort to work with Indiana University on their sustainability efforts, and seeing the university and the community as having so many shared and overlapping goals. Is that, is that still happening? Or do you feel like there's a lot of room for growth in that area in terms of cooperation?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. And one of our commission members is from the IU Office of Sustainability, so we have that connection. But of course, we would like to work with the office directly and with the other organizations on campus. For example, you know, the student government organizations, a lot of times have a sustainability officer or committee or something like this. So yeah, we're interested in collaborating with, you know, businesses, with local government organizations, with educational organizations, really with, you know, the broadest, the broadest group that, that we could work with.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, thank you very much for your report. As far as the TerraCycle Neighborhood Program, since you've, you're now like on phase two of that, I'm wondering, is, is that something that could be duplicated in other neighborhoods? Is there maybe like a booklet of like, this is how you do it, that maybe we could shop around to other parts of the city?
Absolutely, and that's, that's one of the end goals of this project, is to sort of pilot this and demonstrate what works well, what doesn't work well, so that the outcome of that can be a clear plan to say, okay, here's where other neighborhoods could try this out for themselves, and we've already gone through some of the pain, you know, of figuring out what works and what doesn't. And- And so, yeah, we're hoping that what comes out of that is sort of a, a broad plan that could easily be replicated by other neighborhoods.
Okay, if you could let us know when that's available, that'd be great. I do have another question, but I'll wait.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith stole my question, so I'm going to ask a follow-up question to her question, which is, with the Terrace Cycle, there's also, and I also see that, that Matt Spear maybe wanted to comment on it, but with the Terrace Cycle, there's also ways of doing, they, they do pallets too, don't they? Have, have we explored those, those type of things, like something where maybe we could fund, or some way where city council could be involved in, in sort of helping to spread it beyond, you know, saying nice things about it?
Sure. So if I could, maybe I could have Matt jump up and take that one, because he's very familiar with that.
Matthew Austin. It's all good. So yeah, there are, there are pallets, those are much more costly, but they are available. And there's two times or three times a year where there are sales, and so Garden Quest has always waited for those sales to maximize the funds. And they are finishing up Terrace Cycle 2.0, meaning the boxes are, are now getting full. And so they've put out a word to the neighbors to see who wants to put in their own money based on how many people are participating. So we're figuring those things out right now. There are multiple free programs. The Waste Reduction District does have free program, one free program, I think, out at the South Walnut location, but there's multiple free programs that we could have situated around the city. And then, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, what was your question in the beginning? I want to make sure I address that. Oh, the, the data, yes. So there have been other neighborhoods that have actually already inquired about reproducing. Their issue is finding a suitable house to have the boxes at, where it's easy. So that's the barrier to entry that we're currently seeing. But there are other grant programs out there. That Hand would be one that would, the simple, and the, simple grant, I think, would apply pretty quickly and easily to that. But we do have the data, and we're trying to move forward, and we would like to present, we will be presenting that to, or Garden Quest will, will be presenting that to B Cause as well. And then, Councilmember Ralph, what was your question? Because I had something to add to that.
It, it was regarding collaboration, cooperation with the university. Now, compared to what, what I feel like it was when, guys, I feel like his last name was Brown or something, and it seemed to be there was a lot of work at the time, but I just, was wanting an update, I guess.
So the Director of Sustainability for the Bloomington Campus, Quentin Gilli, is on the commission, as Justin stated, he's very active. And the Sustainability Department at IU is doing a lot of stuff, stuff that I'm probably not, shouldn't be, you know, I'm not allowed to talk about. But there is a, they are doing a pilot right now, and they're looking for additional volunteers at the tailgates. They've rolled out recycling at the tailgate gates, big white dumpsters for recycling, red dumpsters for trash, and they've got people handing out trash bags and recycling bags. So I did that for six hours at last, last football game, and people were excited about it. And it's, it's a really simple thing that can make a big impact. So, yeah, we are, because of how engaged Quentin is and his staff is, there's a lot of possibility there. And Garden Quest is also looking at some of those things. They met with Quentin, and he had three specific things that he was looking for, for assistance with. So there is more of that happening, but yeah, things go slow. Any other questions on those?
Yeah, we're just about at time. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, did your follow-up question get answered in there somewhere?
It did not, but I can just follow up via email. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report this evening from B Cause and for all of the work that you guys are doing. All right, moving on to council committees, I'm right, there was no council committee reports. Wonderful. Then we're moving on to our first session of general reports from the public. So if you are sitting out there and would like to make a general public comment on items not on the agenda, can go ahead and make your way to the podium, make sure that you sign in, and then you'll have up to three minutes. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. Looks like we do have somebody here in chambers, so as long as the timer is all set, go ahead and introduce yourself again for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Matthew Austin. I just wanted to give you an update on the Taste of Bloomington food waste pilot. Today, Garden Quest buried the 150 pounds of food waste in the pit at Will Detmer Community Gardens, and they also reclaimed over 300 pounds of usable food that went to Wheeler Mission, Friends Place, and the Shalom Center. And we see this as a duplicatable system that can be used at other conferences as well as festivals, but the idea is not to be a food waste company, it's to be a food waste training company, where we train the festivals, the volunteers, the conferences, how to manage their own food waste to make everybody fully responsible. So if you go out to Will Detmer, think on the, ended by the end of the month, Garden Quest has partnered with Master Rental, they've been gracious enough to donate the equipment to dig four or five more pits, because the goal is to find another festival or conference or multiple festivals to partner with, to get, to apply for the grant from B Cause, to fund that, to do more education, and keep more food waste out of the landfill and do a lot more training. So thank you very much.
Are there other members of the public who would wish to make a public comment in chambers this evening? Go ahead and, and come, come right on up to the microphone, go ahead and sign in, and then you'll have, make, make sure you sign.
I fall over a lot, so maybe I'll sit down.
Okay, that's fine, there's a microphone right there that you can bring down to your level. Wonderful. And if we could make sure that you sign in.
Yeah, I'd like to speak about.
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm John Lenomar.
Thank you.
If you get that right, you're pretty smart.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to speak about UDO and this house, this beautiful three, three-bedroom bungalow on a, on a wooded lot, which they're going to tear down and then put a fourplex in. Okay, I'm smart enough to know that UDO, we can't turn it around, but I'm hoping, and this is the, this, let's make it clear, I'm hoping that we can amend it so that the residents of the area, the Eastern Neighborhood Association, have the final say over what happens in their community. Now, I know this UDO thing has been thrown out as progressive. It's not progressive. It's, if it's progressive, then Donald Trump sending the border crossers to New York was progressive. It's the opposite of progressive. It's top-down, we know what's best for you kind of stuff. And I, I'm strongly opposed to that. I believe in, in democratic decisions on these things. Okay, let me build my case. First off, for decades, the idea was that you wanted to have stable neighborhoods and you wanted to have, you know, talking with the people in the neighborhoods. This just absolutely turns it on its head. It's like the latest fad that has come in, and now we have to live with it. Okay, let's, let's talk about the money thing. First off, I own my house, it's all paid for, I intend to die there. I went to that neighborhood because I wanted the vibe of it, and I don't like that someone is coming in and telling me, we know best, and we're going to put this, we're going to cut all these trees down, we're going to tear down this beautiful house, we're going to put in a fourplex because we know best. I resent that. Okay, I'm not just some rich guy who doesn't care. I worked in the civil rights, well, I registered voters in Mississippi in 68, and I risked my neck. I took a three-time felon into my house and let him stay there, you know, in hopes that it would turn him around, he could have, be on, you know, work release and so forth. I'm not that guy, okay? And however, let's say you have a $500,000 house, and this UDO fourplex moves.
Three minutes. If, if you would like to email us additional comments, you can do that, okay?
Could I, 10 seconds?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Every, every, everyone who is in favor of not letting the organizations.
Sir, that is your three minutes. I'm, I'm very sorry.
Okay, I'll talk to you in a minute, son.
Please write us if you, that would be fine, thank you.
Okay. I hope you'll put an amendment out, Andy, come on, man.
Do we have anybody online right now who has a hand raised?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's continue on here in chambers. Please sign in and then state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
You talking to me?
Yes, I am. Go for it.
This is a previous candidate for mayor of this city. He's a Vietnam veteran, a wounded Vietnam veteran. My name's Mark Hagerty. He's a wounded Vietnam veteran, a previous candidate for mayor, and he can't get more than three minutes in front of this body. Now, I'm a wounded Vietnam veteran too, and I'm sure I can't get more than three minutes either. But I have a bunch of things that I'd like to tell you all, but I'd like you to be able to respond. I don't want to talk to a bunch of dummies. What do I want, a classroom? I'm not talking to you anyway. I'm talking to the camera. I'm talking to the voters. I'm talking to the people out here that have watched our democracy decline, not just in the United States, but here in Bloomington. One-party rule is not acceptable. Candidates with no opponents is not a landslide. The fact that we don't permit write-in votes unless the state pre-approves the candidate is a negation of the concept. But I don't hear anybody say anything. And when, there were three or four hours of people waiting at the COVID polls, and Indianapolis opened up several more voting places, and I went to court to try to get our judges to do something, they couldn't have the power, they just couldn't do it. Well, it shouldn't have been me, it should have been you. And I'm relying on you to stop state police from aiming guns at our students here in Bloomington. It's not acceptable for them to have firearms trained on that bunch of girls sitting in Dunn Meadow peacefully. That's just not acceptable. It's not over. They banned the Gaza protests at the university. They couldn't ban us from Vietnam. Well, we had skin in the game. That was when they decided they were going to, you know, that's when they were going to start drafting students. And then the university blew up, and the town blew up, and we elected McCloskey in the middle of that because students had skin in the game. Well, we all have skin in the game now. I'm getting run out of this town. I live in the black community. It's white now, and I bought a house for almost nothing that was falling apart and fixed it up. I can't even afford the property taxes on it now. Four months rent, it's, I've got it for a rental, because my kid's gone now, it's a rental, four months rent and property tax, and my tenant is a cook in Columbus. That's what I'm up against, one thing after another, of running all the independent candidates, and none, none of the Democrats ever saying anything about it. I went to jail for a month for that. I've been trying to stop this ascendant seat of Trumps and all of this, ever since I got back from Vietnam. And I don't mean out of the Marine Corps, I mean in the goddamn barracks. Yes, I know, I know, I'm not going to get arrested again tonight.
I would like to enforce for three minutes consistently, thank you.
You know, thank, thanks a lot.
I try, I try to do it consistently, thank you. Are there other people in chambers who would like to make a public comment during this period of time? Is there anybody online who has raised their hand?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will move on then to appointments to boards and commissions. Do I have a motion related? I know that we have one, so. Interview Committee, C, who's on C? Who's on Team C? Councilmember Ralph, or Rallo?
Yes.
Appointment in front of me, I'm sorry. Thank you. So Team C Interview Committee recommends Maria Puskama to Seat C4 of the Commission on Hispanic and Latina Affairs.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Maria Puskama to Seat C4 of the Commission on Hispanic and Latina Affairs. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to, oh, I'm going to mess up her name if I'm not looking at it, to Maria Puskama for her service on that commission. Moving on to our first readings for this evening.
Ordinance 2025-33 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-33. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read? Ordinance 2025-33 to establish the Fiber Connectivity Fund for Digital Opportunity Initiatives. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2025-33 establishes the Fiber Connectivity Fund to support broadband access for income qualifying residents, ensuring affordable high-speed internet and promoting digital opportunity while also securing annual infrastructure contributions from the developer. Thank you very much.
I move that ordinance 2025-34 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-34. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, that motion passes. Will the clerk please read? Ordinance 2025-34 to establish a fund for the proceeds of the surety bond secured for work on fiber optics network for the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance establishes a dedicated non-reverting fund to hold one, to hold the $1 million received when the surety bond payment on bond number 1160465 was called due to failure by Meridium Infrastructure North America Corp., Corporation subcontractor AEG to properly install fiber within the city limits. Damages were incurred by the city and certain notice of violations were issued by the city of Bloomington Engineering Department against AEG, who was working on Meridium's behalf for violations of Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding work performed in the right of way. Appropriations of the funds will be requested by the City of Bloomington Controller to the city council at a later date. Thank you very much. Those two ordinances will be heard two weeks from tonight on September 17th for their second reading, and they will be discussed at that time. Moving on to our resolutions for the evening.
I move that Resolution 2025-13 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to introduce Resolution 2025-13. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Yes, Councilmember Stasberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, that motion passes. Will the clerk please read? Resolution 2025-13 to establish the Affordable Housing Pilot Fund of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution Monroe County, Indiana. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution creates the required Affordable Housing Fund to receive payments in lieu of taxes from approved pilot projects and other allowable proceeds for the purpose of supporting the affordable housing-related activities listed in Indiana Code 525-15.5.
Thank you.
I move that resolution 2025-13 be adopted.
Second.
Great, thank you. And after all of those roll calls now, we actually get to hear about a resolution. Looks like our controller is here. Please go ahead and introduce yourself for the record and tell us all about it.
Good evening, Council. Controller McClellan, I'm asking for you to, to establish a fund called the Affordable Housing Pilot Fund, and this fund will hold the receipts that we get from our four Affordable Housing Pilots that we have with four different apartment complexes in the City of Bloomington. Earlier this year, we established a pilot program with Cambridge Square and Henderson Courts, both owned by GLIC. We already had a pilot program with Countryview Apartments and Evergreen Village. This, those, those payments that we received in '23 and '24 from those already established pilots had been deposited into the general fund, and that was just kind of standard practice. When we created the additional two pilots this year, our amazing legal department looked further into the code and found that Indiana Code 5-20-5-15 requires that this, that we create a fund by resolution, it specifically says that in the code, to hold these payments, which we are perfectly happy to do. We're going to create that fund hopefully tonight, and we will transfer the payments that we've already received, which is about $150,000 in pilot payments. We'll transfer that into this fund. We will start depositing the payments going forward into this fund, and we will appropriate out of this fund from the uses described in the, in the resolution. We'll appropriate into the Hand Department the uses that are in this fund. Hand already administers housing programs, and they're very good at administering those programs. The uses in this fund are very similar to the, to the programs that they already have a very good handle on administering, so this will just be another tool in their toolbox to really use these pilot payments the way they are intended to be used. We'll have easy tracking and be easily able to report back to you how the funds are being used every year. And I just think it's a great record-keeping, like, mechanism, having this fund separated from the rest, from our general fund. That's, that's all I have for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for the controller? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you, McClellan. Regarding the two, the past ones, Evergreen Village and Countryview, had we made any expenditures on those receipts? They were just generally in the, in the fund, but there was no time when Hand was saying, oh, well, we'll use these for X purpose?
We have, we have not made any expenditures specifically on those receipts. They were deposited in the general fund, and as you know, a lot of stuff
Yeah.
goes into the general fund. We have a cash balance in the general fund, so I think it's safe, just from a general, just in, in general, I think it's safe to pull that $150,000 out of the general fund and put it in this fund. I can't say that we've specifically earmarked, or earmarked those revenues and spent those specific pilot payments on a use specified as, in this fund. So I think that we can just go forward and, and transfer that.
Of those two, what, what are the, have those been paid out in totality? Are they 10-year funds? How long were those pilots?
Oh, that's a very good question. I believe those pilots might be 15-year pilots. I don't know. I didn't put those agreements in your packet, but I'm happy to get that detail out of the agreement for you and send it to you. So, but I can say, Countryview started paying in 2024. Evergreen Village started paying in 2023. They are up to date on their payments. Countryview pays about $62,000 a year, and Evergreen Village pays about $10,000 a year. So it's not a ton. It's not like a huge amount, like a huge receipt every year, but it, it is a pretty substantial, you know, for an affordable housing, you know, assistance to specific, to, to individual homeowners. It's, it's a good, it'll be a good program that that department can run.
May I ask a follow-up, or should I, I can wait till? Sounds good.
Are there other questions from council members about this?
Okay, I have one. And I, I sent this message to you earlier. This is in reference to the Section 3.1 that says that this would enable those individuals and families to purchase or lease residential units within the county instead of within the city. And your response from me, and, to me included that, that the, the state statute is written that way, and so you wanted to give council the broadest latitude possible to determine how they want to use the fund, which implies that council has some latitude for how to actually use this fund. And so I just wanted to ask you about that. So like, the fund is being created, and that there's all these allowed uses per Indiana law, but, but how does, how is council going to actually be making those decisions? And like, because I think that it's City of Bloomington money, not Monroe County money, and so we should be benefiting residents living within the city limits, not just within the county. And so I am just concerned, I guess, about that detail and making sure that like, just because it says county in there right now, doesn't mean that somebody can come back and say, hey, it says county, so I should be able to receive this supplement even though I'm not within city limits.
Right. We, there, this fund is very limited. It is very limited by state code. There are only four acceptable uses, and one of them is just administering, the cost of administering the fund. So that takes, that's really only three uses that have to do with affordable housing, providing it to families. The attorneys decided to match the resolution of this fund to Indiana Code exactly, so that we had a fund created exactly the way Indiana Code intended us to create it. And the only latitude that we have is that the county is bigger than the city. So the resolution, obviously, so the resolution says that we can use the county, and I think that the intent of the city attorneys is to give us the latitude to, to, to narrow that, to narrow that use to the city. We could, but we could, because Indiana Code gives us the ability to include the entire county, we don't have to narrow it to the city. We can narrow it to the city, but we're not required to narrow it to the city.
Where would we narrow it to the city, though?
That would be something that we do in policy.
Okay, but council, I mean, depending on what policy is, I mean, there's a ton of internal policies within departments that council doesn't actually have latitude or control over.
Right.
So like, is there the possibility that internally the Hand Department could say, well, we actually want to extend this to the whole county, and council wouldn't be able to do anything about that?
Well, since state code allows us, or since state code says that this result, that this, these funds can be used for any resident in the entire county, I think that is, that, that this fund would be able to use, be used for a resident anywhere in the county because state code requires that.
So would a resident of the county then kind of be entitled to be able to use these funds since state code allows that? Like, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm not an attorney, and we do, I'm going, maybe going to-
Do we have an attorney online right now?
We do have an attorney online. There, yes. There is attorney, there is legal office representation online. I believe, I believe Anna Holmes is online. And I would just be curious what Anna's, what Ms. Holmes' interpretation of that part of code is, as it refers to council.
Hi, Anna Lambert Holmes with the Legal Department. I don't believe that a person living in the county would be entitled to receive these funds, if I'm responding to the correct question. And, and it is within the city's purview to determine how these funds are used within the allowable uses established by state law.
So Anna's saying the city's purview to determine how these funds are used within allowable uses established by state law. Anna, you're a little bit muffled.
Yeah. I think that the, the text at the bottom, I think, is picking you up, but I could not understand you.
So it sounds to me like council members are concerned about, that don't want county residents coming in, county residents having the ability to apply for these, this funding.
Well, I'm concerned about that. I can only speak for myself.
This council person is concerned about that, yeah.
I can only speak for myself, yeah.
Right. I'd be happy to do some more research, but I, I don't think that that would be an issue, as you said, Madam President, as long as the, the policies and the programs run by Hand stipulate that they are for the residents of the city.
And, but those policies would be stipulated by Hand, not by council?
You know, I, I, I don't want to misspeak, so I, I don't want to say exactly what that, what that practice is about who sets the policies and how those programs get developed. I guess I'm not really 100% sure about what comes to you and what gets established in the department.
Okay, thank you. Are there other first-round questions? Councilmember Asari, second round?
My follow-up question was somewhat similar to the line of questioning, but maybe just, just a little bit, I don't know, more discreet. What role does council play in appropriating funds from, from, from this fund?
Council will be presented with an appropriation request, usually as part of the annual budget process. You'll have the opportunity to ask a department all manner of questions, any kind of question you desire to have answered. The, and the, the budget will be presented to you just like every other budget with personnel and supplies and other services, but you have the opportunity to ask any kind of question you want about the application of the program.
So the fund is as any other fund?
The results of the program, yes.
So the fund is in any other fund that Hand does not have discretion to spend it without an appropriation from council, right?
Yes.
And, and then, just, just, this is just maybe just a technical question, but does it make a difference that we establish a fund through resolution versus ordinance?
No. I looked this up in the State Board of Accounts manual, and it says that a fund can be established by resolution or ordinance, depending on how state code, like-
And it doesn't change the quality of that fund or how, yeah, awesome, okay. And I have a follow-up question, but I'll ask in the third round. It's a very quick one.
Does anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm glad Councilmember Stasburg brought up this question of why it says county and not city for the affordable housing that would be stimulated by this fund. Is, is use of this new fund going to be part of your budget request for 2025?
It is not-
I mean, 2026, I'm sorry.
Right. It is not part of the budget request for 2026, and we don't have an appropriation request for it for 2026. We just, we just don't. I, I know that the Hand Department has a lot of funding that it can give out, and I think that we're just not ready to fold this in. We're happy to come back in 2026, like, mid-year, and kind of present an appropriation to you at that time to spend these funds, but, but we don't have a request at this time.
Okay, so we would see-
And we're not coming back to you.
We would see the, the request coming forward. It's not going to be buried somewhere in all of the budget book that we have now.
Yeah. If we, if we're, I don't plan on coming back with a request now in 2025 for this, for this. And I'm absolutely open to coming back mid-year 2026 with some kind of plan request, but there isn't a plan to do that as of now.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Councilmember Asari?
Okay, my last question is, you, we've been talking a lot, both in the fiscal committee, I think council processes to some extent, and I think this particularly led by Councilmember Piedmont Smith, this desire to get a better understanding as a council about all of the funds, and, and thank you so much for all of the incredible work, and I think in the heavy lifting also of, of sort of sorting all this out and then making it more accessible to us and the public. But could we use this as sort of like a test case of, of like how we would be reporting on fund balances moving forward? Because, you know, I think what's, what's interesting about this fund, right, is that there's sort of payments that come in chunks over time, and then, you know, there'll, there'll be spending that happens in chunks, too, which I mean, maybe is, maybe is not dissimilar to other funds, but just, you know, thinking through some of the things that we've been working on with you, like, how does, how will the funds be reported on moving forward?
Yeah. That's a great topic, I think, for fiscal committee. I would love for fiscal committee to have kind of like a regular, like, quarterly report, which is kind of like that, exactly that, which is a fund balance report, a little bit of an explanation, kind of like highlighting some key, like, outliers, like, hey, notice this, notice that. This is, this is normal, this is not normal. That would be a great place for that report, and then it could live on, out on the website somewhere, and we could have discussions about it.
The only thing I would, I would add just as a thought to that is like, we, the, maybe the difference between this and like, I don't know, the parking meter fund, right, is that there is a sort of steady expected amount that's supposed to be in it, and so I, I'm wondering if it would be useful to say, you know, like, have a benchmark, and so when we're reporting back, we're like, you know, this is, this is how much we expect to be in it, and this is how much is in it, something like that, because otherwise it's hard, yeah.
Absolutely. This fund was going to have very expected-
Exactly.
Like, discrete revenues. It's going to be very defined. Yes, and we can report on that. So, I mean, again, I, I think that the fiscal committee is a great place to, to develop that kind of relationship between the administration and the council in a smaller kind of conversational discussion setting to review those kind of reports. I would love to get to that place where the fiscal committee becomes kind of like a, a true, like, small fiscal discussion area for this kind of quarterly reporting.
Thank you. I just want to tag on to that for just a minute, because I know that we have a lot of funds, and so just the request that instead of having like one report that covers all the funds, I think that it would be more digestible, at least for me personally, to have multiple reports that just handle some of the funds. So instead of getting all of the information at, at one time, get smaller chunks of it at separate times. I don't know how well that works for your workflow, but that just might be easier to, like, digest in a, in a single meeting.
We should definitely discuss in a meeting.
Yeah.
And look at examples and discuss, and, and I can definitely provide lots of examples and different ways of sorting things.
Yes, I'm, I'm sure. All right. Any other questions from council right now? All right, let's go ahead and move on to public comments over resolution 2025-13. If you're a member of the public wishing to make a comment about this establishment of the Housing Pilot Fund, if you're in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium, making sure to sign in and introducing yourself, and then you'll have up to three minutes. If you're online, you can go ahead and use the reactions tab to raise your hand. Do we have anybody online? Wonderful. Let's go ahead and start online then. Please introduce yourself for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Yes, this is Kevin Keough. Non-compliance, I noticed that it dates back to 2016, so I would think there's like eight years, maybe eight, nine years of non-compliance. First question, are there any consequences to this non-compliance? And then also, this got me thinking about the, the audit reports that's dated July 17, 2025 for, for calendar year 2023, but there, there's a, a single audit done, and they do a single audit on the federal funds. And, in fact, there was a qualified opinion in 2023 on the compliance, because of compliance issues. And, and so I, I know, we, we spoke to in the, the budget about the importance of compliance with federal, because you might lose federal funding. So it got me thinking about state compliance. And, and my question is, is there a process to examine the financials for state compliance? And if so, is there some type of report? And, you know, hopefully it would be open to the public and how to access. So that would be, I, I don't, I have no idea if that's done. I know it's done for the federal funding, but I don't know if it's done for state. And, and the reason I mention that, for 2023, there wasn't a report by the state board. Usually, the first page is a report from the state board where they say that they give their blessings. But I didn't see that for 2023. For the years earlier than that, the state, you know, who do you report to would have an, an opinion or a report that would be part of it. So that concerned me, too. So this idea of non-compliance, and in fact, it's dated back so far, and I don't know how you pick up the pieces of all the past non-compliance to make it right, so to speak, and to get it up to date. And just thinking about that, and so I know it's very complex, but it just got my attention. And I was thinking, so- So that is my public comment tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public commenters in chambers? Any other hands raised on Zoom? Great. Thank you, let's come back to council then for any follow-up questions or, um, final comments. Councilmember, sorry?
I have just one super quick follow-up question, and it's just clarifying on a question I already asked, which is, if it doesn't matter if we do resolutions or ordinances to set up funds, why don't we just always do resolutions moving forward? Like, we have an ordinance here that we're, you know, and can we just make an amendment to it right now and call it a resolution so we can save time next week? Jokes about the last bit, but.
In my research today with State Board of Accounts, um, ordinances created with the, um, through the home rule part of the statute do require, or res, funds created through the home rule part of the statute do require an ordinance? So normally we create funds through that part of the statute. That's okay.
Thank you. Any other follow-up? Council attorney, Lainer?
With respect to this particular ordinance, Indiana Code Section 5-20-5-15.5, which establishes the Affordable Housing Fund, states for whatever reason that the fund should be created by resolution. I, I don't know why that's the case in this particular statute, but it is.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, any other council member comments or questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Uh, yes, happy to vote in favor of this, which I think is more or less required, uh, to administer these funds. I did want to take the occasion then on the topic to register some skepticism about, uh, relying or leaning on payment in lieu of, of taxes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of it, the payment in lieu, um, in a different context, which, which has a slightly different, uh, set of implications in terms of policy choices. I guess what I want to mention with the payment in lieu though, and regardless of how we, um, come by these funds and how we, uh, then, then administer them from a policy perspective, and what type of policy, uh, the Hand Department may create, which I expect will probably be contained within the department, is that we should try our best to use these funds in ways that, um, seek income diversity in neighborhoods, and in particular, folks who, who need, um, the benefit of, of subsidy to help, uh, afford housing in a very unaffordable market, uh, to access resource-rich and high-opportunity neighborhoods. Uh, there is a ton of research about the importance of that in, um, social mobility, uh, and I think we haven't always done a great job of achieving that in the way we implement funds. And so, uh, from a policy perspective of how we choose to use funds, I just wanted to, uh, plug that as a really important, uh, area of focus for me at least as a council member. Thanks.
Clarifying question, councilmember, sorry?
Could you just clarify, do you mean the way that we use the funds or the way that we think about pilots to begin with? Or both?
More so how we use the funds in this context. I think when we think about payment in lieu of, uh, including in development affordable units in the context of different afford, um, incentive pathways within the UDO, there's implications for which policy pathway we're prioritizing and why, but I think that's less relevant to, uh, payments in lieu of taxes.
Are there other follow-up questions or comments from council members? I, I would like to follow up on Mr. Keough's, um, question about whether there's any consequence to, to not having created this fund, Control and McClellan, um, when, when the first pilot was established, however many years ago?
Yeah, the fund was not created when this fir, when the first pilot was established, and we are doing that cleanup now. This has never been, um, brought up as an issue when we've had our annual audits. And I, I don't see anything in code that, um, gives a consequence for not creating this fund. So there may just be no consequence in code for the state examiner to use against entities that don't create this fund. But we are creating the fund now, um, and I think that that is a very good thing.
Any other comments? Okay, I, I, I have one slightly. I, I think that, I, I'm, I'm also happy to support this. I am concerned about the, the county versus city line, um, and it's not that I want to be like elitist or something like that between city and county, but in terms of what's paying into this fund, I mean, basically, these pilot programs, um, are us as, as the city is saying, okay, instead of getting full taxes paid from whatever development this is, they're going to provide some affordable housing, and so we're going to reduce their tax liability. Or in the case of these couple that were approved earlier this year, they're going to provide some, um, upgrades and improvements to the living situations in lieu of paying some lower taxes. Um, and then what taxes they do pay are going to get funneled into this account. So, uh, because like part of the, the funding, like the revenue that's coming into this account is reduced revenue for the city related to these taxes. And so that, that's why I think that it's really important that what revenue does come in ends up going back out to residents who are also living in the city, unless I'm really mistaken about how these pilot funds work, which I don't think I am. But, so I guess that that's my comment for staff listening to this, that, you know, and whatever policy that gets created, I just want to make sure that, that city residents are the ones that are going to get the benefit from this. And I agree with Councilmember Flaherty in terms of trying to make sure to maximize some of that upward mobility and, and maximize some of those, uh, ways that, um, we can support our residents being in, um, in the, some of those high-value areas with really good amenities. So if there are no other comments, if the clerk could please call the roll on Resolution 2025-13.
Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes. Thank you, that passes unanimously, I think that's seven, seven? There's seven of us here tonight, thank you. Moving on.
I move that Resolution 2025-14 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce Resolution 2025-14. Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion? Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, will the clerk please read? Resolution 2025-14, a resolution of the Common Council of Bloomington, Indiana, designating Bloomington as a B-City USA affiliate. The synopsis is as follows. The Bloomington Environmental Commission, with the support of the Parks and Recreation Department, is proposing that Bloomington be certified as an official B-City USA city.
Thank you. I move that Resolution 2025-14 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, and it looks like we have somebody all ready to present, if you could make sure to introduce yourself.
Absolutely. Um, my name is Carrie Albright, I'm the chair of the Bloomington Environmental Commission, and I appreciate getting a moment just to talk a little bit about the B-City USA program. Just so you understand, I'm happy to take your questions if you have them after. But basically, we are hoping for your approval of a resolution that we would then submit to be a certified B-City. So as is common knowledge at this point, climate change and, uh, human practices are endangering pollinators. Right now, I believe 35% of native bee species, for example, are at risk. And what we would like to do is participate in a program that shows that Bloomington is taking steps and has taken a lot of steps to protect pollinators. So there are different reasons why pollinators are struggling, and a lot of those things are, um, elements that we can do something to address. Some examples are habitat loss and degradation, use of pesticides, um, certainly diseases and pathogens, and a larger scope of the climate crisis impacting pollinators. So the reasons that we think that this is important, and I'll just go ahead and read these, are that it helps ensure the survival of vital species crucial to our planet's functioning ecosystems. The certification through B-City USA, which basically provides a, a framework for how municipalities can implement pollinator habitat improvement programs. It recognizes and it celebrates our city's ongoing work on cultivating pollinator-friendly habitats and removing invasive species. And it joins Bloomington's other existing certifications. We're a bird town, we're a tree city, I believe we're a gold-level bike-friendly city, so there's a lot that Bloomington has to feel proud of, and we'd love to incorporate, um, this, uh, certification as well, uh, as well as some of the different partnerships that we participated in, Project Wingspan, MC Iris, um, the, obviously the work that we've done, the Habitat Connectivity Map. And then recently, IU, uh, was certified as a B-campus. So we worked with them as well on getting steps forward in the earlier, um, months of the year. So we would be one of the first cities in Indiana that would be, uh, B-City. We were beaten out by Columbus and Avon, but we'd be very proud to be the third one. When it comes to what's required of us, it's, um, actually something that we're excited to be able to achieve pretty straightforwardly. One is hosting it on the website, it would be, um, part of the Parks webpage, and as we mentioned, um, the Parks Department is in, uh, collaboration with us on doing this, and our lead would actually be Joanna Sparks, who's here with us right now and who's graciously, um, joined us in this pursuit. The annual requirements are also straightforward. It is hosting pollinator events and outreach activities. As you know, the EC is very excited to be doing this already, and there are other organizations in town doing that as well. Um, it would be, uh, installing a sign that B-City USA provides, which, uh, which would be maintained by Parks and Rec, but would announce, uh, Bloomington as a B-City, and then also submitting, uh, an annual report to the organization that hosts the B-City USA program, which would be submitted by Parks Department. Uh, there is an annual fee, which would be something that the Environmental Commission uses, uh, part of our budget, our annual budget, to cover. It's a $400 fee that, um, would, uh, gain us access into this program. And then we discuss kind of in the long term, this would be an ongoing thing that we would pursue. If we needed to have some, some support, we would work with the Parks and Rec Department on that. But at this time, it's planned to be coming from the EC's budget. And part of the appeal of this is not just the recognition, but it's also an access to a lot of different materials, whether it's for outreach or for training. B-City USA has, uh, plenty on their website that they offer to their partners. Um, it's also, uh, includes things like online workshops and things like that, and having members of the Parks Department and also of the Environmental Commission have access to those trainings is fantastic and a great way to, um, access resources for professional development and team development, um, that are part of that price. And then also to, um, have access to the Xerces Society Pollinator Conservation and Pesticide Res, uh, Reduction Staff. So working with them if we need, um, support on something, have questions on something, or, uh, just need further engagement there. So that is what we're hoping that you will support through our resolution. Were this resolution to get passed, we would then submit it to B-City USA for consideration and approval as, um, being invited to be one of the B-City USAs. Are there any questions? And I've got, uh, Commissioner Matt Calde with me, and, uh, Joanna Sparks here, uh, to answer questions if you have them as well.
Great, thank you very much. Are there questions from council members? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much, um, and, and I'm super supportive of this, so just, um, you know, uh, amuse me with my line of questioning. Try, try and understand a little bit between the, the balance between, um, what we're doing that's symbolic and what we're doing that, you know, would actually have, um, specific outcomes, um, to our practices. And so, um, specifically within the packet, we outline annual requirements, um, such as hosting an event, submitting reports, um, to Xerces. But we haven't talked about like local evaluation, and so like beyond, um, the required report, how will we measure success in Bloomington? Like, what do we want to see happen here?
Well, that's a great question, and I'm not sure if either of you have any initial thoughts on it, but it's something that we've, um, discussed through our working group, so if you've got some ideas, you can.
If you could make sure to state your name for the record.
Yeah, Joanna Sparks, um, Urban Green Space Manager for the City of Bloomington.
Hi, Joanna.
Yeah, thank you so much for hearing us this evening, we're really excited about the potential for joining, um, the B-City program. Sorry, I'm a soft talker sometimes.
Not for me, but for the people online, yeah.
Better? Okay, great, yeah.
I don't think so. Can you move real close to the mic, so?
Okay, better?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you, sorry about that. Joanna Sparks, Urban Green Space Manager for the City of Bloomington, and I work, um, in the Parks and Recreation Department, and I, um, happy to answer your questions on, um, the B-City USA, um, certification request. And I will say, um, before we, like, I answer your question, that, um, we're already doing lots of the things, and, um, it's, um, it's really exciting, um, to have the potential to be acknowledged and to have sort of a license, if this is approved, to collaborate more deeply with the community on what we're doing, because that's where, um, our biggest impact will be for the community, is if we can, can broaden our, um, outreach aspect.
And as an, as an additional note, um, obviously, we will be following up on this with the EC's annual report, so it may be that there are things that trickle through, through collaborative events that we host or, um, different outreach activities that we participate in, that that would be something that informally we would be sharing. But as far as a, an official report or evaluation of if it's worth it, um, or if we're finding value just as a, um, a, a local group, I think that, as Joanna said, we have a lot of initiatives that are already in place at this point. So it really is just kind of, um, being able to be recognized for something that the city has already invested so much time and interest in.
And I think that really clarifies that, like, the work that we're already doing, uh, do you feel like there's going to be additional work, um, with the certification, like outside of the, some of the required, you know, alignment with some things that Xerces is doing? But it sounds like, yeah, I mean, maybe not, maybe not, let me not answer the question for you, but, is there additional work associated with this?
Certainly a little bit there. Um, we will, um, form a committee of, um, composed of different, um, members from the rest of the community. We already have commitments from, um, B-Campus and IU B-Campus, um, the Monroe County Identify and Reduce Invasive Species, Sycamore Land Trust, and of course, the, um, Environmental Commission, Carrie and Matt are gonna, gonna help us, um, get the, I'm sorry, Carrie, Carrie and Shannon will actually, yeah, be, um, be actually helping us get, um, our committee started, and we, um, we have requests out to, to several other organizations just to, um, help, um, build bridges and, and, um, allow, and expand the work that all of us are doing, um, individually and into a more of a collective effort. But as, um, the committee liaison for the city, I will be responsible for submitting an annual report where we will, um, the Parks Department loves data, and we love metrics, and we love reports. So we're, um, we, we will, we have, we'll have information to share, for sure.
Thank you so much, Joanna, thank you.
Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I, I just had a, um, question forwarded to me about, from a constituent about, um, are there any similar, uh, programs for other insects, or is this in, in, that we're unaware of, or is this? Bees are a good indic, indicator species, but the question was about butterflies. Is there anything regarding that?
Sure, the Mayor Monarch Pledge is something that Bloomington participated in, um, up until, I think, just a couple of years ago, but that's something that we, um, we did not make the 2025 deadline for that, but it is on our roster to, um, pursue it for 2026.
Great, thank you.
I will, I can add a little bit to that too. Um, this is titled B-City, however, it is focused on all pollinators, creating, um, habitat for all pollinators, which certainly includes, um, the, the Lepidoptera, butterflies, moths, and skipper, yeah.
Are there other council member questions? Councilmember Ruff?
So I, I noticed one of the, um, the goals or indicators of, of, of making progress towards being a B-City USA, and that the university was a B-campus, was, um, written, mentioned reduction in pesticide use. That's a question I, I hear sometimes out in the community from people. Will the report that's required, or any report, um, related to earning or maintaining the status as B-City, will it give us, um, I mean, we, I guess we could ask Parks and Rec, um, but, um, something, uh, concrete on terms of, I mean, is there, is there a requirement for a certain reduction amount or percentage to, in order to earn the, the certification? Or, and will, will that be available in a report, or?
No, there is not, it's not my understanding that there is a requirement to reduce pesticide usage. However, um, I will say that, um, one of the, the guiding, um, documents, the, the policy for the Parks Integrated Pest Management Plan, does require us to minimize our use. So we do- So we do use pesticides very carefully and adhere to our Integrated Pest Management Plan, which is available on the city website, where we also track all of our pesticide use within the department. Is also, all that information is available updated daily on our city, the Parks and Recreation Department website. So I mean, we, I am the Integrated Pest Management Plan Coordinator, so I track that data, surprise. So yeah, I can share that information, but that is not required of the report. However, I mean, the requirements are the bare minimum. We do have the option to share more information, so.
Well, thank you, that's wonderful information for me just to hear right now, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, I have maybe one to start with. I want to get back to, you were talking about the committee, and I was just wondering how you listed a bunch of different organizations that you were going to work with, and, I mean, is this committee going to have public meetings? Is it almost like going to be its own little commission, like?
No, and Rachel, do you want to speak more to this? This is a little bit outside of my wheelhouse. I'm going to ask Rachel Johnson, our Senior Environmental Planner, to come and answer this quick.
Great, thank you. If you could introduce yourself for the record. And so kind of the rest of that, I'm just wondering how the committee members themselves will be chosen, like what kind of qualifications or interests, and how many committee members there will be, and those sorts of details.
Rachel Johnson, Senior Environmental Planner with Planning and Transportation. As far as the public notice, I believe it is the intent, and I've been working closely with Joanna on this, for the meetings to be publicly noticed. Since it is a committee, I don't think there's the intent to codify this committee at this time. If that's something we should do, I think we'd be happy to do that. As far as interest, Joanna and the Environmental Commission has outlined who they think are interested parties, but I don't think there's, you know, an application process at this time outside of reaching out to Joanna and expressing interest. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. What is like the purpose of that committee in terms of, like, what's the committee actually tasked with?
Sure, it's first the requirement of the Xerces Society, so that's, you know, the biggest purpose, but also just kind of as a feedback loop of, you know, initiatives that the city and incorporating residents and businesses to kind of have a holistic perspective on just Bee City and the Integrated Pest Management Plan, as well as increasing the natives in Bloomington.
Okay, thank you.
Joanna, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other first round questions? Because I have another one, too. While you find it, I'll take my second one. Oh shoot, I lost it. Councilmember Ari, take it.
Mine's quite a quick one, but with the other designations that we have, like Bird City, how does this interact with complement? Is there any places where, you know, what we'd be doing to be a Bee City contradicts what we want to do to be a Bird City?
That's a great question. I don't believe that there's any conflict between the different statuses of these certifications, but I do know that this is something that there are multiple environmental recognitions that we have as a city. So it's something that I'm sure that we would continue to lump those together when we're talking about Bloomington's focus on an improved environmental space for its residents. But I don't believe that there's anything that we're concerned there'll be any either conflict or overlap that is at all inefficient for it.
Do we have like a similar committee that oversees the Bird City designation? Because, I mean, actually, I mean, I shouldn't, maybe shouldn't admit my own ignorance, but I only learned about it in the packet that we were of Bird City, so.
There's a lot to keep track of. But yes, the Environmental Resources Advisory Council, which is managed through the Parks Department, administrated, I guess, through the Parks Department. Our Natural Resources Coordinator is the liaison for that advisory council, committee, council, sorry, see, I can't even keep track. But yeah, we approve the Bird City certification pursuit and cooperation with the Cessafres Audubon Society, originally in 2016, and that was again through the, through ERAC, the Environmental Resources Advisory Council, and that's a cooperative agreement with Monroe County Parks, Cessafres Audubon Society, and numerous other community organizations, which because I'm not the liaison, I can't, I can't tell you all of them, but.
But then, so why set up a separate committee for the Bee City if they're, if they sort of complement each other, coordinate? We already have a body that's doing Bird City. Like why not just have that sort of under one integrated, you know, oversight body or implementation body?
Well, I can answer that. Yeah, I think, I think to equitably distribute the work between the Urban Green Space Manager, the Urban Forester, who is the Tree City Liaison as well, and then the Environmental Resources Advisory Council, which is our Natural Resources Coordinator. So, yeah, just to not ask one particular Parks and Recreation Department staff member to manage all of those. And each of us have, each position has its own area of expertise, so it's important to have, I'm going to make up funny here, cross pollination between our areas to.
That was good.
Yes. So we can, yeah, work, continue to work cooperatively to meet all of our collective goals.
Fantastic. And can I just have one, and I will close out my life of questioning, if we were to ask what the state of pollinators right now in Bloomington is, do we have that type of data?
I don't know, I'm not aware of anything definitive, but I think that it's important that we are doing the work that we're doing.
Totally agreed.
Yeah, my personal observations, professional observations are that pollinators are in trouble.
Of course, right. But do we know if whether the efforts that we've already undertaken have had a measurable impact on improving the state of pollinators, or should we be doing a lot more than, you know, than this step here, right?
Oh, of course, we should absolutely be doing more, yes. We need to do as much as we possibly can. I will say, as the Urban Green Space Manager, my area is responsible for about seven acres of formal landscaping throughout the city. Almost half of that is at Switchyard Park, which we brought online early in COVID 2020, so we were still trying to wrap our head around managing all of that. But we certainly see large numbers of native insects, birds, all sorts of pollinators in those spaces. And even if it's on Kirkwood or the College Mall, Medians, we are doing what we can to use native species to provide habitat throughout the city. Our UDO requires almost 100% native tree species, tree and shrub species. So we, yeah, we really are pushing a native forward agenda with all of our plantings, specifically to create habitat for pollinators. Because, yeah, we understand as a department how critically important native species are. And we also have a huge drive to remove invasive species, which is probably next to habitat loss due to development and human activities. I mean, invasive plants are our biggest nemesis. Yeah, that's really something that the Parks Department puts a tremendous amount of energy into managing. And as part of that process, we do it with the goal of introducing or at least making space for native plants to restore, to, yeah, and if they don't come back, we help on them. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, I thought of my follow-up. What you've talked about, and I feel like with this Bee City USA designation, it's more about what we as a city do in terms of city properties and city managements, but what kind of, are there requirements related to outreach to residents in terms of trying to convert, you know, yards, say, or trying to get residents to plant more natives and pollinator gardens and that kind of thing? So are there requirements related to the program to do that? And/or like are, I mean, I know that those initiatives are already happening to some degree in Bloomington in terms of encouraging that kind of stuff, but are those initiatives going to be expanded in any way through this designation? Or do you have plans on how to try to get individuals to do more conversions? Want to speak to that? I mean, that's a large part of EC's.
Yeah, so as far as the concrete requirements of how exactly we engage the public, I don't know if there's any specifics that are outlined there, but awareness and outreach are one of sort of the core components of it. So our expectation is that we will continue to facilitate, whether it's creating an event or activity, or just participating in them to get the general public more engaged. But the idea is very much to put in place the pieces that we can through city departments and pre-existing organizations, but then also engage the public in understanding what their role is. And obviously, that's something that the EC has done in a couple of different directions, and there are other initiatives happening in the city that are also focusing on that. So while I don't know that it's like a concrete requirement of this participation, it's definitely something that's in our plans for the coming year and the years after that.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and go to public comments on Resolution 202414. So if you're a member of the public who would like to comment on this resolution about Bloomington becoming a Bee City, if you're in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab. I don't see anybody moving in chambers. Do we have anybody with a hand raised on Zoom?
No.
All right, we'll come back to council for any comments. Any councilmember comments? Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, this is a wonderful thing, and I appreciate your efforts. I want to compliment Joanna Sparks for all the work she's done over the years. It goes, a lot of it unappreciated, I'm afraid, because I think a lot of it has to do with education. So, you know, your planters, you know, became problematic around the square, apparently, because they weren't tidy enough. I think that this just demonstrates that the need for awareness of the situation that we're in. I mean, bees are an indicator species, insects are in decline. There was a famous paper, 2019, I think, proceedings of the National Academy, and it was followed up by a German study that showed a decline of like 75% insects. That's a basis of the food chain. So it's no doubt that, you know, birds are in decline, 3 billion missing birds since 1970, because, you know, a lot of birds eat insects. So I really applaud your efforts, everything both of you are doing, and I look forward to expanding awareness, so people do the right thing. Don't, you know, don't contribute to habitat loss, encourage native flora and fauna, and avoid industrial agriculture if you can, because that is a huge, has huge implications. So thank you for this and happy to support it.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Councilmember Ari.
Just echoing what everyone else has said, how much, how appreciative we are of the incredible work that you do, and to the members of the committee who's brought this forth, thank you so much for your advocacy and organization here. To me, a really great example of, you know, we're trying to move towards outcome-based budgeting in the long run. I mean, I wish we'd do it quicker than maybe we have an appetite for, but this, I think, to me, a really solid example of something that we would all agree that we want, especially in a city named Bloomington, how important it is for us to have, you know, a very healthy ecosystem across the board, but particularly with this indicator species. But so I'm really interested in thinking about when we ask the question, you know, what else should we be doing beyond designating as a Bee City? And the answer is, well, there's so much we should be doing, having the data to back that up, so we know with this and all other types of programs saying like, this is, you know, this is the benchmark here, like this is what we're aiming for in terms of funding and in terms of programming, in terms of organization. And so something that I hope this really helps us do is build some of that data setup, you know, about sort of the state of pollinators, so we know the things that we're doing, how they're having some type of an impact, so we know, hey, we need to actually move the needle quite a bit more, and in these ways. And so I know there's the type of things that we have said a lot as a council, particularly this body. And so just so you know, full support particularly, and just thank you again for all the work you're doing.
Other comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Environmental Commission for all their work on this, and Joanna Sparks and the Parks and Rec Department for already having done some of the work that Bee City USA is expected to do. And I think it's a great new partnership between Parks and Rec and the EC to collaborate on Bee City initiatives. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Daly.
I just want to echo everything and also add, thank you so much for validating my overgrown yard. I really appreciate it. I feel much better now, thank you.
Other councilmember comments? All right, I'll go ahead and take a turn. Councilmember Ari, you asked about data, and I don't have data, but I do have the anecdote that there was actually conversation on the Park Ridge Facebook page about monarch butterfly caterpillars, because there are apparently so many in our neighborhood this year. My mother has noticed some in our garden, and then my neighbor across the street mentioned them eating everything and wanting to figure out what else to feed them, because they are very hungry caterpillars. There's your toddler reference for the day. And I also want to encourage data tracking of residents converting plantings to natives and pollinators. And I don't know how much of that is being done now in terms of that data tracking, but just in thinking about the, you know, 11-ish years that I've been in my neighborhood and the changes in a whole lot of yards, and we have a couple of very active neighbors that really do a lot of work over there in the neighborhood, trying to promote these things and do a lot of, a lot of work, and I'm sure that that contributes. But I think that there are probably neighbors like that all over Bloomington. And so I think that that piece of data would be really, really interesting to convert. And I think that those were the things that I wanted to say to add. So also, thank you very much for all of the work that you guys have done.
I'd like to just share a little Park Ridge East neighborhood thing. Yeah, an amazing pollinator garden at Park Ridge East Park that was funded in part by hand, a hand grant that neighborhood activists made happen. And we actually were funded to remove four and a half acres of invasive plant species on the property and install an incredible pollinator garden that is comprised of Monroe County native species only. And we work the third Saturday of each month during the growing season in the morning. In September, we'll be there the third Saturday at 9:00 AM to work on the pollinator garden, but we try to activate the community and provide them the resources that they need to keep that garden maintained. And it's a wonderful place. Even if you don't want to come and do any work, just go to Park Ridge East Park and check it out, yeah, visit it, yeah. So it's a wonderful thing, and the community there is really actively involved, and that's what we're hoping to just ripple out through the entirety of Bloomington community, is to activate people and engage people and, yeah, have them plant native plants.
Yep, thank you. If there are no other comments, so, Councilmember Ruff.
In response to that last bit of information you gave us about the projects, they're going native plantings, neighborhoods. How much effort, if any, is required in order for those projects to be successful in terms of keeping deer from impacting negatively the projects?
Those are really good questions. Well, we have a six-foot fence, yes, and that was funded as part of the installation of the garden, is we have, yeah, two large sturdy gates and a six-foot, two-inch by four-inch welded wire fence that we keep maintained. And that's the sum total of the deer prevention. And we've done extensive native tree plantings throughout that property, the four and a half acres that we removed invasive shrubs, mostly Asian bush honeysuckle from those, all those trees are also caged with six-foot caging material. So there is an initial cost, those cages are reusable, so once they can outgrow the deer browse line, as well as the bark becomes strong enough to withstand the deer antler rubbing, then we can remove the cages and. the deer antler rubbing, then we can remove the cages and put them on other trees.
So, but it does require pretty much complete fencing and caging of all, of everything?
Exclusion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
There is nothing further. Will the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 2025-14? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Osari?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously, 7-0. So now we have moved on to the additional public comment section for this evening. So this is an additional period for the public to comment on items not on the agenda. So if you're interested in commenting on an item not on the agenda in chambers, you can go ahead and make your way to the podium. If you're online, you can go ahead and use the reactions tab to raise your hand. See somebody in chambers. So make sure that you sign in, introduce yourself for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank your work and the administration's work on the 2026 budget. I realize a lot of effort went into this, and having followed this the past few budget seasons, I think it was a good season and an improved season, and we're heading in the right direction. Our members want predictability. They want clarity. All those things are critical. I think the mayor's approach of a fix-it-first, maintenance and completion, and flight over new project expansions makes the most amount of sense. While the proposed budget did have the 11.2 million general fund gap, as Councilmember Flaherty noted, we've been in surplus through my rite of reasons. But in the face of SB1, we are going to be facing some trials and tribulations. But the city has a history of being resilient. But I want to reinforce what was sort of mentioned in the discourse, which was the need for offset-first approach when we're talking about spending or compensation increases for our valuable city personnel. From the business community's perspective, the things I would encourage, as noted, was as the offsets would pair any new investments with a reoccurring cut so the deficit doesn't become structural, so making it one-time investments. Clear-cut rollups, we're not there yet, but we need kind of an apples-to-apples over year-over-year comparisons, which I think are still hard for me to at least grasp. And I'm one who follows this pretty closely. Outcome metrics, the priority-based budgeting. This is the first year we rolled that out, but let's continue with our fiscal committee to look into ways where we can kind of get some of those quarterly updates, especially if we're adding new personnel instead of relying on consultants, which I generally agree. But we want to make sure we're getting what we, the taxpayers getting what we want, whether that's, you know, public safety response time, transit reliability, permit turnarounds, all of that. Those are indicators that we want to see directly. This approach to service services strong while preserving fiscal credibility, ensuring taxpayers can get a return on their investment dollars is the direction I think we want to go. And I think I'm going to continue encouraging that fiscal committee and the budget committee. I think those are good sort of avenues where the council has a role in ensuring that they have the counterfact to the administration, ensuring that they have a say in the budget process. Thanks.
You stuck to three minutes, even though the timer never came up. Are there other members of the public wishing to make a comment during this period? Is there anybody who's raised their hand on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on then, notes on council schedule. So next week, there will be a deliberation session of council, and it is, we are facilitating a community conversation around housing and housing experience. It's been talked about a couple of times already publicly that our planning department is kind of going through that assessment and trying to determine housing needs and attainability, kind of with the end goal of policy change. And so I worked with the planning department director to plan the session for next week. So please come. I'm hoping to get a wide variety of people here. We will be having small group discussions that will be facilitated by pairs of councilmember and city staffer. So there will be more information coming out. And if anybody has any questions, they can contact me and let me know that. Are there any other notes on council schedule? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
The, excuse me, the Committee on Council Processes will meet next Monday, September 8th at 12:15 in the Allison Conference Room, 225.
Any other notes on council schedule? Okay, seeing none. We are adjourned. Thank you.